Okay, I call the meeting in order. Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is stood by the United States of America into a republic where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess we're supposed to do, "The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda." Seeing that. Roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mr. Valero.
Here.
Mr. Mandela.
Here.
Mrs. Dye.
Here.
Hello again, how's everybody doing?
Good.
We have a full crowd here tonight.
Glad you guys have joined us.
Right?
Yes.
The gang's all back.
Yes, we're all here.
Exactly, it's very nice.
We're not traveling or anything.
No, not in the least. And everybody's got a nice little, like, blue ensemble going on with your ties and your shirts.
I didn't get the memo.
Well, the tie looks a little on the bluish side, no?
We'll go with that.
Okay. And you, too! All right, Mr. DeVita and I are the only ones that are individual this evening.
You guys look more easter-y and more of a springtime.
I think so, spring. It's very spring, exactly.
Very, very spring.
So how was everybody's spring break?
Wonderful.
It was very great. It was California, had a blast.
Very nice.
Fun.
Awesome.
Stayed at Betty Davis's estate on Airbnb, it was fun.
Oh, nice, nice.
Yes, it was really nice.
It's really cool.
Nice.
And he says you have the life.
That I do?
Yeah. See that?
Well, some of our kids got to go to Costa Rica with the high school, and I just want to say thank you to Mr. Rocco, Mr. Canelo, and Ms. Jessen for taking on the responsibility and taking them on an adventure of a lifetime.
Amazing trip.
That they'll probably remember for the rest of their lives, which is, uh, it was pretty amazing. So we thank them for doing that and for continuing to do that as well. Next trip is South Africa, so we thank them. That was very nice of them to take the time and take thirty-seven kids there and bring thirty-seven back.
Thirty-seven came back.
So...
Yes.
Were they all the same kids that went?
I'm hopeful.
Me, too.
Mine came home, how about yours, Mr. Mandela?
Mine came home.
All right.
Two bonuses.
Absolutely. All right, any, uh, I was gonna say committee reports. Nope, I was getting to it, don't worry.
I know you're very anxious.
I know you went somewhere, Ms. Devita.
I can go anywhere. I think Mr. Valero probably went places more than I did.
Uh, we had a future-ready schools meeting last week done in Trenton to finalize the indicators, and Mr. Featherman will elaborate a little bit more, but that's pretty exciting. We're gonna, that's gonna get rolled out to communities, and people will start to be able to do self-assessments for their future readiness. So it's coming, so more to come.
Awesome.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's great. That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Wow. You missed a lot, Mr. Mandela.
Do you have any?
I just have the best of the fest. Best of the Fest is going to be at Cedar Grove High School on May 5th at seven o'clock. The APT is partnering with the Garden State Film Festival. We're doing it as a fundraiser where they're going to take seven of the film festival's short films made for kids, you know, they were made for, by kids, but made for kids. And the high school actually, over the past two months, actually, two students wrote, directed with other students, two short student films. So we're going to have seven from the Garden State Film Festival, two from the Cedar Grove High School. And we're gonna have a red carpet, step and repeat, banners, the whole thing. It's gonna be a little thing, and we, hopefully, it will become an annual event from now on. We're going to keep on working with the Cedar Grove Film Club. The high school has a film club, and we're gonna keep on pushing that to try to keep on having something different.
That's great.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Very nice.
Yes.
Did you post, I mean, I know that it's probably in the papers and all that kind of stuff, but did you drop a flyer off at, like, the senior buildings or anything?
No, I should probably, yeah.
Cause they would really like that.
It, it, it's great, it's at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
And it'll, it'll be done by nine, and that's a good idea, I'll get, I'll make some flyers up tomorrow.
That's something that I think they might like.
Yeah, and it's, uh, and it's relatively inexpensive. It's ten dollars for, um, for adults and seven dollars for students or seniors. And it'll be, you know, your ex, two hours of films, all these little cute short films.
It's pretty cool.
It's great.
That's awesome.
Then, one other thing that most of us attended was the North End Tricky Tray that was held on April 13th, which seems forever ago, but it really wasn't.
Yes, we did.
And, um, we did, it was great.
We did. We have an awesome photo of some of us.
I want a nice soccer package.
What'd you win?
I won a birthday party at the Chocolate Factory.
Ooh! A Chocolate Factory.
The Chocolate Works, I think, or...
Chocolate Works.
Something like that.
So that means we're getting a donation pretty soon.
Where's it at?
Yeah.
And what'd you win? Did you get yours, Mr. Featherman?
I won nothing.
And he was so bitter about it.
I was very bitter.
Yes.
Everyone at my table won chocolates, American Girl Dolls.
Every time somebody won, he got so bitter.
Clothing to American Girl Dolls.
He got so bitter.
Okay, there you go. We, we, oh, that's right. She's a great student. Yeah. Four prizes, but it's just separate.
But it was sold out, it was over five-hundred-and-eighty people were there. It was crazy, yeah. The North End FSA, they did an amazing job.
They did an incredible job of moving that thing along.
They did.
They went through five-hundred-something prizes, and like...
You were done, you were done, right? I mean...
Four hours?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Do we know how much funds they raised, or what was the...
I haven't heard, have you heard what they...
We haven't gotten, I don't think, the final total yet.
Still count the pennies?
We're still counting the chips.
Okay, gotcha. So to be announced, but I have to imagine they did pretty well.
Certainly was.
Yeah, no, it was fun, too.
It was very well organized, right?
Yep, it was good.
It was, it was very controlled.
Yeah, they did a great job, so I'm sure it was a very successful fundraiser.
And thank you to all those volunteers again for putting everything together.
Yeah, and you for guarding, what, what did you guard? You guarded one of the big prizes.
I guarded the money tree, I was officially the, the guard for the money tree.
Yeah, he was the guard for the money tree.
Yes.
You better get that figure.
Everybody played a role. So anyway, it was fun, and it was great, and it's good that they raised, hopefully, a lot of chips.
Buckets loaded.
Okay, good.
Good.
Nice.
That's great.
All right, so, moving on from all of that, we have, um, Mr. Featherman is going to give his presentation on the 2017-18 budget, which we're all familiar with, because we've found through through these slides over the past few months, so this is just more of a summary of what we've already talked about and agreed to.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Josh, folks at home. My first mistake here, I don't have the podium in front of me. Didn't do my due diligence, so I'll, I'll do the best I can to manage the chips here.
Should Vin hold your papers? Vin can hold your papers.
I think, I have to know where the podium is.
That's fine, we could banter just a little longer.
Take a thirty-second recess, if that's okay.
We're just trying to prolong the time, because it's been a while since we've all been together.
We have, we haven't been together.
No, we haven't.
I know. There was a bummer missing.
Such a miss.
Yeah, so what color's everybody wearing on May 16th? Let's get it straight. Are we going with green or blue?
It's May 16th.
It's our next board meeting, we're coordinating the colors.
I don't know, it's my wife's birthday, so...
We'll try to make it quick. You could just bring Marcia, we could, you know, entertain. How would you...
I'll have a little Love That, yeah.
Great way to spend your birthday year.
Yes, so, yeah.
Who seems to have a thing here today?
Me?
Yeah.
Huh?
Well, he's excited about the Best of the Fest.
He is.
Because it's going to be a lot of fun, a lot of fun in our new auditorium, showing these movies. Some of them are very funny, some are really good, they're made, it's made for kids. That was the biggest thing, we asked them to make movies over this period of time that were made for, that their kids would do. And the goal is next year is, and over the summer, the film club wants to organize something so that they actually can have a student film entered or for the Garden State Film Festival next year, so that it actually can be made, and, you know, obviously you have to go through the submission process, but they want to go through the submission process, and, um, and if it gets accepted next April, it'll be playing at the Garden State Film Festival in Atlantic City. So, it's gonna be a lot of fun.
So, so the student films, they, they wrote them, directed, edited, they did all the aspects?
They did, they did everything but the editing.
You can't make stuff.
Editing part, yes, the film peo, uh, Joe and Jimmy did the editing, yes.
We're entertaining the public, don't worry.
And so the, the great thing is, they have not seen their finished films.
That's, that's gonna be a nice trip.
It's gonna be, actually, yes.
Where was it? Wow, we actually need this.
Clearly not right out of town.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
That's a good feeling, yeah.
And, you know, the great thing about it is, is that we really do cinema studies, we don't actually do physical film production, so it was a big learning curve for them, but I think it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Great, that's awesome.
This is, you know, they do that in, they, you know, on TV, Mr. Featherman, they do the, you know, you keep unrolling, you know, stretch it out.
We just kept going, and going, and going.
So clearly I get a C minus for preparedness.
Just a little note that this meeting's being held up yet again because of... Who? Who's running late?
Well...
But now we all know which color we're wearing two weeks, so come on.
Joe, are we live with this mic? Great. My apologies for, for the delay. So let's just talk a bit about most of what you heard already. The preliminary budget hearings have covered most of this, but now that it's finalized, let's talk about it. So where have we been here in terms of the finance committee meetings? Well, as you see there, we've been meeting for some time now to establish the bottom line, prioritizing and paring down expenditures along the way. As you know, as I just referenced, we had some public sessions where we covered this budget in detail, steps along the way. And here we are, April 25th, at the budget hearing. So the preparation timeline, and we started in December, working with building-based administration, the folks that are pulling the levers, if you will, at each of our schools. We need to hear from them to prioritize their expenditures. So in February, we get our state aid figures, and there they are. Not much has changed there, you'll be seeing these numbers embedded within the presentation as we go. On March 14th, we approved the tentative budget, some of you were here for that, and on the 17th, we submitted to the DOE. Okay, so that's the brief timeline, so let's look at the numbers. So this slide here shows an impressive amount of information, lots of dollars and cents here, but one of the things I'd like to point out before we move on is that this 2016-17 column represents the actual budget for this year, not what was proposed when we did this last year. You may recall we had some things happen in district between then and now, specifically the North End incident. And, you know, with that asbestos fiber release came the release of lots of our rainy day funds. Specifically, I'm talking about capital reserve and maintenance reserve. So you'll see some of these numbers here, big numbers, a million four and the like. Those are real dollars that we spent in piecing our district back together after the incident. So that's why the, last year's budget seems strikingly odd compared with the projected budget for next year. As we go through this, we'll, we'll parse out the details. So let's talk about the operating revenue for next year, 17-18. Cue the notes. Bust the podium. Okay, so the local tax level includes the 2% allowable, an increase of $155,000 in health waiver, which totals 2.6%. Budgeted fund balance, withdrawal from capital reserve, I referenced this a moment ago, the withdrawal from capital reserve, well, we're, we're anticipating zero for next year. Let's, let's assume that that's a safe bet. Obviously, this money here reflects what was withdrawn from those capital and maintenance reserve accounts to address the aforementioned problem. Rental income for LRP, still intact, we have a healthy contract there, and some of the costs are offset at LRP for custodial services. Let's talk about some more operating revenue. Revenue's a good word when you're talking budget. As you may have heard, we're introducing a second integrated preschool section at South End for the fall, so we anticipate an increase in revenue there. For one more year, we have a flat budget revenue for aftercare. We will be talking about, you know, with the Y going forward, how we budget from there. Interest income, miscellaneous income, transportation, these are from a variety of grants that were received from the state that help us offset the costs for special education out of district students and the like. But wait, there's more revenue, my goodness. So here are some other categories where we're, you had seen this in the first slide, the money that the state is giving Cedar Grove, we are happy to receive it, and believe me, we put it to good use in terms of park readiness, for people growth aid, PLC aid. It helps us do all kinds of things related to assessment and professional development, so we're happy to recognize that revenue. So the total operating expenditures are what you see there. Okay, so let's talk about it. So let's talk about the instructional programming first. What do we want to talk about here? Uh, let's see. Very little change in regular programming from last year to next. Basic skills programming, we do see some changes there. We anticipated, particularly in the ESL line, we anticipated an influx of students that might push a part-time staff member to full-time, however, we're not realizing that population growth, so that's one of the reasons why we're seeing a reduction in that line there. Media services are relatively flat from last year to next. And instructional staff training looks dramatically changed, but it's really not. What we were allowed to do is, is move some money around some account lines, some legitimate accounting practices that allowed Mr. DeVita to put his own stamp on his first budget. Let's talk a bit about special education. No dramatic changes there. The changes that we do see reflect the increase in staffing, certainly salaries. We'll be adding a special ed teacher at South End. We also have to run the preschool disabled program. Out of district tuition is certainly a large expense. We're always looking to bring students back into the district, but that is not always the case. And you see that related and extraordinary services and child study team costs are relatively flat. Employee benefits. You know, we often talk about the big drivers of, of a district's budget, and while this is certainly one category that does that, I'm talking about employee benefits, including health benefits. Our tuition reimbursement, thanks to our collective bargaining agreements, remains unchanged. Workers' compensation is down, that's a good thing, we have a, a healthy crop of employees and we anticipate them staying that way. How about support services? What do we have here? Attendance health services, you have your nursing salaries there, and supplies for all schools, school physician salaries. Did I skip a slide there? Nope, okay, we're good. One page behind here. Transportation, we've, we're happy to report that by opening up the second preschool disabled program at South End, we were able to eliminate one bus, so that saved us a good portion of transportation. That is, the preschool students that live in the South End side of town will now have their own program to attend. Currently, we are busing students that live on the South Side of town that qualify for preschool here at North End, so there's another benefit to adding the program on the South Side of town. Operations and maintenance, it does take quite a bit to operate and maintain the facilities we have. We've got some changes along this line, we've eliminated a custodial position. You know, we're, we're looking for areas, given the tightness, if you will, of this budget, areas where we can cut costs and not impact instructional programs, so while it's not ever ideal when you're, you're cutting from a particular part of your budget, we were able to, you know, find some funds in the custodial and maintenance areas to do that. Now, why are we seeing such a dramatic difference here? Well, again, in capital outlay, this is where the lion's share of the money came from to address the asbestos incident. We don't anticipate that happening this coming year. If it does, don't look for me, you won't find me, I'll, I'll be elsewhere. Let's talk a bit about the tax impact, this is really what, what people are interested in hearing about. So what is the ta, tax impact for our operating budget? Well, the average increase to, to a home, the average assessed home in Cedar Grove is $141 a month. What does that break down per month? I'm sorry, that was per year, this is per month, that's per week, and, just for fun, how about per day? I think we can manage that. Let's talk briefly as we're winding down here, let's talk a bit about what you're getting in addition to what we have currently. What is, what is this, what are these precious dollars getting us and our kids and our staff in Cedar Grove School District? Well, we are adding a computer science teacher at the high school, we're looking to add a, a third dual enrollment program as well. We talked about the pre-K addition at South End. We're looking to reclaim some funds by hiring our own speech teacher that'll be shared between North End and South End. We currently provide, are provided a service contract outside the district that's costing us a fair bit of money, and we believe we will realize some savings by hiring our own speech therapist, as opposed to contracting that out. We're purchasing K-5 materials for the next generation science standards, along the way, we've, we've shared with the public our, our hard work in that area. We will be fully aligned to the next generation's science standards come September, and along with that comes the influx of new textbooks, new instructional materials, and strategies. We purchased a grade-seven math textbook series, seventh and eighth-grade science textbook series, and a new ninth-grade biology textbook series. Along the way, we've talked about the connected math series here, and again, this relates to the next generation's science standards, so real good stuff. We've also talked about our strategic planning that's going on, while year two, next year, does require us to, to pay attention to these four pillars of, as we've talked about, character, community and communication, curriculum and college and career. Not gonna take the time to go through the details, but we, we have an ambitious plan for next year. Certainly, the conscientious budget, thank you to the budget committee, has allowed us to prioritize these areas and, well, basically allow us to implement them. Any questions? Comments?
I just want to say, so everybody can hear me, so this is the sixth budget I've been involved in preparing, and this by far was the most difficult, I think I've said this before, I mean, just alone, benefits are going up 14.6%, that's $684,000. Special ed costs going up 7.6%, which was 400-something thousand dollars. Together, those two, which we really can't control, is $1.1 million, and the tax levy increase is $672,000. So that means we had to fi, find over $500,000, a half a million dollars in the budget to try to reduce. And never have, I have not been in that position before in the last six years, and what do you, what do you cut? What do you decrease at this point? And so it wasn't easy at all, and the fact that we were able to increase things slightly, I think it's pretty amazing, and, I mean, we definitely went into every single category into, everywhere, and had to try to reduce expenses, so it, it wasn't easy, but, I mean, I think that we're in a really good place as far as the increase compared to what our expenses are.
Absolutely.
And thanks again to Mr. Shoner, this was his first of many budget process, and to Mr. DeVita, this was also his first as well, and he did a great job, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
The first one is always the tough one. It was tough.
Let's hope it's, it's not ever tougher than this one.
Yeah, it was tough.
It's always next year.
Oh, no, it's gonna be better. Is it on budget questions? Can we move on? All right. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for B1 and B2 under minutes?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of April 11th, 2017. B2 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line-item account has encumbrances in expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code, and further pursuant to the code, no major account or fund has been over-expended in violation of the code. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
I'm abstaining from B1 and I to B2.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandela.
I am also abstaining from B1, but I to B2.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B3?
So moved.
Second.
B3 is a motion to pay the listed bills that were in our packet for the amount listed therein. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandela.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under business, we're going to table B7 for the next meeting, so can I have a motion for B4 through B6?
So moved. Second.
Um, B, I guess B4, I need to read the entire thing, or just can I say we're approving? All right, B4, resolve that the Cedar Grove Board of Education has per, approves the use of the 2017-18 healthcare cost adjustment of $155,490. The funds should be included in the base budget for the 17-18 school year and increase the amount to be raised by taxation in the general fund to $26,532,424. B5, resolve that the final budget numbers listed below are adopted for the 2017-2018 school year. And B6 is a motion to approve Emma Lang's change order number nine in the amount listed therein. Funding for the change order will be from the Board of Ed 2014 bond referendum. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandela.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, I believe we have a superintendent's report?
Yes.
An interactive one?
Slides?
Whoa.
It's interactive? Wow, two in the same day?
Yes.
He doesn't need the podium for this one, though.
No, I guess not.
He's gonna lean on it.
Let's get this, yeah.
So, yeah, as, as we do once a month, like to summarize the lengthy report with just a very quick, sort of visual, just extracting some highlights, and the report is extensive, please take a look at it, we'll post it tomorrow on our website, which is, I think, what each school has been up to the last month. So as always, congratulations since two months in Cedar Grove High School, uh, the length of the report, I recognize for her excellence in world languages. How's that? Better, worse, the same, like I mentioned, I don't care. Perfect. So she is a fantastic student, she's looking to study world languages at Montclair State, and major in education. So we hope to someday welcome her to the fold. So best of luck to you, congratulations. What's going on at North End and South End? Well, if you've been around, if you've been to any instruction, you may have stopped by the annual art shows, they're just absolutely dazzled. Mrs. Martin and Mrs. Hachikirku, they just do such an outstanding job working with the kids, helping them create masterpieces that are just such a joy, it's sort of kicking for them. I find it particularly fun when I'm there, talking to the kids that have created these masterpieces, and sort of picking their brain and learning the inspiration behind each piece. Some of these kids were, were those that I spoke to, they're just so happy and proud to display their work, show me a thrill for all of us. What's going on at NMS? Well, if you haven't heard, our students have taken the time to completely redesign tech. This is actually new photos taken this afternoon at about 2:00, some furniture, the last pieces of which were just brought in, put in place. Kids designed, using Google Drawings, the space, with Mr. DeCorte, Mr. Lumino's help, chose furniture, bungee chairs, beanbag chairs, all kinds of items that would just sort of create a much more collaborative space to learn. And I can't wait to stop by there tomorrow and see the reaction on these kids, as they're interacting with one another in these unique spaces. Just a reminder, we have our next coffee talk at South End School, 7:00 AM this Thursday, and our final coffee talk of the year will be held on May 24th at North End, so I'll see you there. And parents of all AED students are welcome. How's academic success going off at Cedar Grove High School? Right now is scholarship season, so we have students, bunches at a time, applying to over 50 level of scholarships, hoping to bring that bricks truck to scholarship night, and leave with a whole boot of money looking forward that evening. Seniors are currently committing to their colleges and universities of choice. We have, as we do every year, our college acceptance board in our guidance office, and the list of acceptances has grown, there's several impressive schools there, we will share that list with you as it becomes more finalized. North End, pre-K celebrates learning, what a great group of kids to have the privilege to spend some time with throughout the year. People are excited, as you've heard me mention a few times tonight, to launch the pre-K at South End next year. It's a special program, it's wonderful to see the integrated nature of the business, we have special ed students integrated with regular ed students that are three and four years old. And the whole idea is to present each of those populations of kids, if you will, with a, a new perspective on socialization and learning. So we're, we're excited about the things they do, and certainly they are excited about the things they do. What's going on at South End? Just touch on that. Well, at South End, in media, they celebrate National Library Month, lots of great things going on there, and as I'm sure you're aware, we're also autism awareness, and we later celebrated Easter, and a book on poetry. There's a lot of great things going on. I was particularly entertained by the Elmer story. And one of the ways that they highlighted differences in acceptance of, is by having the Elmer Day Parade, where the kids create these Elmer elephants, each with their own set of unique characteristics. How cool is that, to see a parade of Elmer elephants, each with their own special take on, on differences, great stuff. What else is going on in computer tech? We're using Google Classroom to help secondary graders design dinosaur projects, and we're using, leveraging our RAS-KIDS program, and our potentially bookmarks, which are basically also, please check out Luke Lee's website, he does some great things, he's really good at, 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 at. Thank you.
All right, under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S9, please?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to approve Christine Carabetstow's, South End kindergarten maternity replacement teacher, for the rate listed therein. S3 is a motion to approve Jessica Schumacher, high school, sixth class stipend, prorated. S4 is a motion to approve the following staff in accordance to the state emergent hiring procedures. And yes, that is the Joe McBride that we all know, we're very excited to have him back on the short term. S5 is a motion to accept the resignation of Heather Laurentino, Laurenteno, sorry. S6 is a motion to approve the following substitute teacher for the 16-17 school year. S7 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S8 is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. And S9 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Valero?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. Under policy and regulations, can I have a motion for S10?
So moved.
Second.
S10 is a motion to approve the second reading of the following policy updates and revisions, all of which we heard at great length at the last meeting, so I think we're good. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Valero?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. The meeting is now open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Seeing none.
I think we should do via satellite from that one.
I feel like I, you know, they should be able to call in, or Skype, or something, you know? I don't know.
We could read questions off the...
Facebook Live, yeah.
Right, or, ooh, sorry, we got disconnected.
We should do that, though.
Maybe not. Announcement of future meetings, May 16th, here, 7:00 PM executive, 8:00 PM regular, and June 6th, I can't even believe we're talking about June, it really is. 7:00 PM executive, 8:00 PM regular meeting. Any discussion, anything else, parting last words until next time?
I just think that the Makerspace in Memorial Middle School looks amazing.
It's great, absolutely.
That is exactly what's going on, even when we, during my convention this year, they've, they're moving all the convention spaces, moving away from that very traditional stiffness and going to that flatness, it's just, it's totally amazing.
And Makers Club does meet tomorrow afternoon, so they get to try it out.
That's great.
Oh, on the subject of Makerspace, I've been doing some grant research, there seems that there's a lot of these, like, microfunding opportunities for Makerspaces and stuff, so I'm gonna start doing some research into that.
Awesome, we look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Valero.
Yes, Mr. Valero.
More pillows and beanbag chairs.
Yes.
All right, can I have a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I think we're done with discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Valero?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes, we're done. Have a good evening, everybody.